Council President Tam, would you like to take the meeting?
Thank you. Welcome to this evening's Westfield City Council meeting on Tuesday, May 28th. We will start, please join me, and remain standing for the Pledge of Allegiance. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America. Joining us this evening is Pastor Josh Cortez, the pastor at Westfield Friends Church for this evening's invocation. Pastor?
Thank you. Good evening. It's an honor to be here. Would you bow your heads as we open this meeting together? Dear Lord, I do thank you for tonight. I thank you for this time that we set aside to think about vision, think about addressing concerns and issues. And so, God, I pray this evening for a spirit of faithfulness to the city of Westfield, to its people, to its leaders. Also, God, a spirit of unity. Would you lead us? Would you guide us? Ultimately, would we be able to see and be united in a vision that betters this place for its people? We love you. We thank you and pray all these things in your son's name. Amen.
Thank you, Pastor Cortez. May we please, Marla, would me please notice the presence of a quorum?
Victor McCarty.
Here.
Patrick Tam.
Here.
Kurt Waninger.
Here.
John Dart.
Here.
Joe Deppner.
Here.
Noah Heron.
Here.
Chad Huff.
Here.
We have a quorum.
Thank you. We have no changes to the agenda this evening. We have approval minutes from May 13th, 2024. I'm assuming all councilors had a chance to review those. Are there, can I have a motion and a second?
Motion to approve.
Second.
We have a motion by Counselor McCarty, second by Counselor Heron. Any discussion? Seeing none, may we call the roll?
Patrick Tam.
Yes.
Kurt Waninger.
Yes.
John Dart.
Yes.
Joe Deppner.
Yes.
Noah Heron.
Yes.
Chad Huff.
Yes.
Victor McCarty.
Yes.
This evening, we also have the claims from May 28th, 2024, in front of us. I know there were several questions by a couple of councilors, several of which were answered. Is there a motion and a second? And any discussion?
Motion to approve the claims?
Second.
A motion made by Counselor Dart, second by Counselor Waniger. Any discussion? Seeing none, may we call the roll?
Kurt Waninger.
Yes.
John Dart.
Yes.
Joe Deppner.
Yes.
Noah Heron.
Yes.
Chad Huff.
Yes.
Victor McCarty.
Yes.
Patrick Tam.
Yes.
Motion carries seven zero.
Thank you. Director Todd, do we have any of those that wish to address the council? Thank you. We do have some special recognitions this evening. Our first proclamation this evening with Counselor Dart is declaring Friday, June 7th, 2024, as National Gun Violence Awareness Day, and Wear Orange Weekend through June 7th to June 9th. Counselor Dart?
Thank you very much. I'd like to ask the members of the Hamilton County Moms Demand Action for Gun Sense to come up, if you would. And if you just take a quick second and introduce yourselves.
Elizabeth Anderson.
Laura Shaley.
Marsha Melenda.
Thank you for joining us this evening. I love everybody's wearing orange. Yes, so we want to make a proclamation by the city of Westfield this evening. So whereas on June 7th through the 9th is Wear Orange Weekend, signifying the beginning of National Gun Violence Awareness Month, people across the city, state, and country will wear orange. It's a simple but very powerful action. And whereas orange is the color hunters use to protect themselves and others from harm, the color is bright and demands attention. It is the color that a group of people in Chicago chose to honor a friend who was killed by gunfire at the age of 15. They performed a simple act that has become a national movement to honor the victims of gun violence. And whereas anyone can join this campaign by pledging to wear orange on June 7th, the first Friday of June, to help raise awareness about gun violence. And whereas by wearing orange on June 7th, 2024, Americans will raise awareness about gun violence and honor the lives of gun violence victims and survivors. And whereas we renew our commitment to reduce gun violence and pledge to do all we can to keep firearms out of the hands of people who should not have access to them, and encourage responsible gun ownership to help keep our families and communities safe. Now whereas, I, John Dart, on behalf of our mayor, Scott Willis, the city of Westfield, do hereby proclaim the first Friday in June, June 7th, 2024, as National Gun Violence Awareness Day. This will be done in the city of Westfield, Indiana, and we encourage all citizens to support their local communities' efforts to prevent the tragic effects of gun violence and to honor and value human lives. In witness whereof, I, John Dart, on behalf of Scott Willis, have hereunto set my hand and cause to be affixed to the great seal of the city of Westfield, Indiana, on the 28th day of May, 2024. So I'd like to present this proclamation to your organization and give you 30 seconds, a real quick 30 seconds of what you ultimately are trying to accomplish.
Thank you, John. So much of what we're about was spoken about in the proclamation, certainly. This is the 10th Annual Wear Orange Weekend coming up in June, and it's most important to us because we feel like we should be able to demand that future free from gun violence. And as you said, we do it to not only raise awareness of the gun violence epidemic in our country, but also to honor the victims and survivors and anyone that's been impacted by gun violence. I thank you for the proclamation and for the lighting. As I told him prior to the meeting, Westfield is the only city in Hamilton County that issued a proclamation this year, so we appreciate that immensely. Thank you very much.
Thank you for joining us this evening. Really appreciate it.
The next proclamation this evening, if you'd like to come join me, is for the Friends of Hamilton County Parks. This evening, the city of Westfield, whereas the mayor of Westfield, Indiana, is committed to supporting a thriving, vibrant, and healthier community for residents of all ages and abilities, whereas the government of Westfield, Indiana, recognizes the importance of providing access to safe and convenient places to be physically active for people regardless of age, race, income, socioeconomic status, disability status, and geographic location. Whereas the physical activity guidelines for Americans recommend that children ages six to 17 do 60 minutes or more of moderate to vigorous intensity physical activity each day, and adults age 18 and older do at least 150 minutes per week of moderate intensity activity. Whereas the Centers for Disease Control and Prevention is leading Active People Healthy Nation, a national initiative to help 27 million Americans become more physically active by 2027. Whereas local communities can support Active People Healthy Hamilton County by implementing one or more of seven evidence-based strategies recommended by the CDC, increased physical activity across sectors and settings include building active and walkable communities. Whereas the city of Westfield, Indiana, recognizes its ability to expand achievable, measurable, and sustainable efforts to increase physical activity across the community by supporting Active People Healthy Nation strategies. And now therefore, I, Patrick Tam, acting on behalf of our mayor, do hereby commit to supporting Active People Healthy Hamilton County strategies by teaming up with the Friends of Hamilton County Parks Foundation and by submitting a project that meets the strategies that align with the criteria provided by Active People Healthy Hamilton County and the Friends of Hamilton Parks Foundation. Witness whereoff, I, Patrick Tam, on behalf of our mayor, have hereunto set my hand and cause to be affixed to the great seal of the city of Westfield on this 28th day of May, 2024. Thank you.
If you care to introduce yourselves just real quick.
Sure. Hi, I'm April Williams, the executive director for the Friends of Hamilton County Parks Foundation, and we are just thrilled that the city of Westfield has made this a priority and joining us in the Active People Healthy Hamilton County Initiative, and we are really looking forward to the project that Mayor Willis and his team will submit.
I'm Thomas McLean. I'm a resident of Westfield, and I'm excited about being a part of this entire endeavor. I think it's important to get people out and get people active in our community especially.
Hey, thank you very much, and we look forward to working even more. Thank you. Next this evening, we have a historical police presentation by Mr. Rory Gentry. Mr. Gentry?
To the council and all present this evening, I'd just like to take a few minutes' time to share an item of historical importance to our police department and the city of Westfield. I'll do my best to keep it brief and informative. In April 2023, Diane Payton, the president of the Westfield Washington Historical Society, contacted me stating that there was likely another officer who had been killed in the line of duty while working for Westfield. Some clues had been found while looking through the old minutes of the town board, and she said it needed to be looked into further. I began researching this on my time, on my free time at home. Prior to the discovery of this incident, Deputy Marshal David Brown was commonly believed to be the only law enforcement officer to be killed in the line of duty in Westfield, which was on January 11th, 1969. After a few preliminary searches, I began to find newspaper articles stating that Westfield's night watchman, William Mead Smith, was struck and killed by a car at approximately 1:00 a.m. on November 2nd, 1928. This prompted a more in-depth investigation into the matter. Based on a compilation of newspaper reports, it was learned that night watchman Mead Smith was struck and hit by a hit-and-run driver in front of the Denny Livery Barn. The modern address of that is 132 South Union Street. His hat and flashlight were found at this location. Mead's body was found in the road about 150 feet away in front of the HO New Hardware Store. The modern address is 110 South Union. While driving through Westfield, it was a former undertaker from Kokomo named Harry Moore who found Mead's unconscious body in the roadway as he was driving home from Indianapolis to Kokomo. Help was summoned from a nearby lunchroom where Mead was taken, and Dr. Baldwin was called. Mead succumbed to his injuries within seconds of Dr. Baldwin's arrival. Mead's body was taken to the Evans and Godby Funeral Home in Noblesville to be prepared, and then returned to his home in Westfield for the funeral. Mead's body was interred at the Little Eagle Creek Cemetery, where a family grave site was found and photographed. A simple gravestone that says "Mead, 1882 to 1928" sits next to the graves of his parents, Charles and Lily Smith. Sheriff Thomas Ramsey and Coroner Frank Evans investigated this incident. At this time, it's believed that a suspect was never named in Mead's death, although a grand jury may have been looking into the case at one time. An official report from the sheriff of the coroner has not yet been found. The Westfield Town Marshal at the time of this incident was Frank Sherrick. With the town board's approval, Mead Smith had been hired as the night watchman on February 19th, 1927. The marshal was paid a salary of $50 a month by the town. The night watchman received $15 a month. The town board approved paying his final salary of $15.50 to his mother, Lily, in following Mead's death. Mead was single and had served the town of Westfield as night watchman for one year, eight months, 15 days, when he was killed in the line of duty, just seven days short of his 46th birthday. The town board minutes show that John Ballard was named as his successor on November 6th, 1928. Fast forward to October 4th, 2023, Police Chief Rush signed a 19-page research document that I compiled. I submitted this information to the review board in Washington, DC, for Mead's name to be considered for inclusion on the National Law Enforcement Officers Memorial. The materials were reviewed, and on November 27th, 2023, the Westfield Police Department was notified that Night Watchman W. Mead Smith's name had been approved for inclusion on the National Law Enforcement Officers Memorial in Washington, DC. Mead's name was formally dedicated, May 13th, 2024, at the 36th Annual Candlelight Vigil during National Police Week. Myself and several members of the Westfield Honor Guard were in attendance. A name that was lost to history for 95 years is now memorialized in our nation's capital forever. Unfortunately, we haven't been able to come up with a photograph of Mead for historical purposes, and we haven't been able to find his family, so it's still an ongoing process. But the major parts of the investigation, so to speak, are done. And in closing, a Westfield Police Department memorial coin has been made, which has inscribed the names of both of our fallen officers, David Brown and Mead Smith. These have been shared within the department at the memorial in Washington, DC, and I share them with the council tonight.
Thank you, Mr. Gentry, and thank you for all those that serve our community 24/7 and are willing to make that sacrifice. Greatly appreciated. Thank you. Next up is our recap of the solar eclipse event at Grand Park. Director Deck will be making the presentation this evening.
Okay, for the record, Matthew Deck, Director of Facilities and Events for the city of Westfield. I'm going to give a brief recap of the April 8th, 2024 solar eclipse event at Grand Park. So Grand Park saw approximately 5,600 attendees. Roughly 50% were from central Indiana. We saw visitors from all over, just a few to mention California, Washington, Wisconsin, New York, Florida, and even Australia, Ireland, and Germany. The economic impact to the city and county, nearly 90,000 visitors to Hamilton County, and that's defined as people from 30-plus miles who stayed at least 30 minutes in the county. All 50 states were represented throughout the county. Ninety, that's a 96% increase in normal visitation for that same day in 2023. We had earned media with Hamilton County Tourism through Road Trippers, Wish, Fox, WTHR, IBJ. I'm not going to read them all, but you can see there was quite a bit of exposure with regards to the event. On Sunday, there was nearly a 98% hotel occupancy and 276 vacation rental bookings for April 2024 versus 85 in April 2023. And in comparison to the other venues in the county, which there were at least 20-plus other venues that hosted solar eclipse events, the event at Grand Park was the most attended event in the county. Our event budget, $25,000, was earmarked in the 2024 general budget out of the promotions line item for the event. We did end up spending around $26,600 from that general fund budget. Our revenue was generated through ticket sales, vendor booths, and sponsorships, and we generated almost $33,000 in revenue. We had a total of 30 volunteers who put in around 90 total volunteer hours. I think the best part about this event was the amazing collaboration between our Westfield Welcome Team, Grand Park, police, fire, Hamilton County Tourism, Westfield Washington Schools, our city staff, and the Westfield Washington Library. We had 10 locations throughout the city where glasses could be picked up, just creating more community-wide involvement. Some highlights from the event. We did have solar viewing telescopes provided by Grand Universe, along with their joint promotion and detailed information throughout the event. Grand Universe put on events at Grand Junction Plaza and the Westfield Washington Library. Attendees at the event had the opportunity to ask questions of NASA astrophysicist Dr. Mark Subarao. And from a social media standpoint, there were 49 total posts, over 1,400 likes, and almost 150,000 impressions. And lastly, just a little bit of feedback from folks that, outside of Indiana, that came to the event, that enjoyed it so much, they wanted to make sure we knew about it. My family and I are from the suburbs of Chicago, and some of us decided to watch the eclipse in Indiana, and after doing some research, chose to watch the event in Westfield. I was so impressed with the size of the venue and how easy it was to park and move around. It was entertaining, informative, and fun. You even ordered perfect weather. It was a great experience and one we won't forget. Thank you, Westfield. And then tremendous eclipse event, so well organized, great family games, even though we didn't have kids there, wonderful food truck options, fun band, nicely spaced out, perfect in every way. Thank you and your team for making this once-in-a-lifetime event so special, and that was Beth from Bloomington, Illinois. And lastly, I would be remiss if I did not give a huge thanks to Kristin Mix, our senior events coordinator for Westfield Welcome, who spent countless hours in making sure this event was a tremendous success.
Thank you, Mr. Deck. Any comments, questions from council? Counselor Dart?
Yeah, thank you for the presentation, Matt. Really appreciate that. So, as you mentioned, a lot of venues in Hamilton County also had viewing events, if you will, also around Indianapolis with the Indianapolis Motor Speedway. What reasons do you think drove people to Westfield? What brought them to Westfield? And then the second part of that question is what was the cost to attend versus other Hamilton County venues?
Sure. So Grand Park offered a unique opportunity to really have a 360-degree view of the eclipse, meaning there was a portion during partial totality and totality, not totality, but partial totality, where you could see a 360-degree sunrise. At Grand Park, there are no obstructions. The Motor Speedway, you're not going to be able to do that. And I think that, along with the fact that Grand Park was so wide open, that it was so well organized, and that parking was so easy, that that was a big attraction. And then if you compare the price, Grand Park charged $25 per carload. And when you look at other venues around the county and the state, I think that was fairly comparable, was certainly not on the high side.
Any other questions, comments? Thank you, Mr. Deck. Thank you also for your team's great work that day. I personally enjoyed Westfield Zone judging a food eating contest. Joey Chestnut judging a food eating contest for young kids is pretty cool. So, thank you. Old business this evening. We have ordinance 24-24, which is the Westfield Washington Schools Event Center PUD. This was introduced previously. Mr. Collingwood's here, council sponsor, Deppner as well. Ryan?
Yep, thank you, President. Thank you, President, members of the council. For the record, Ryan Collingwood with the Community Development Department. The item before you this evening for adoption consideration is the Westfield Washington Schools Event Center PUD proposal, or ordinance 24-24. The subject development is approximately 2.62 acres, located at 333 West Hoover Street, seen on the location map. To provide additional context, the Westfield Washington Library previously occupied the building on-site prior to moving into their new build at the southwest corner of Park Street and Westfield Boulevard. Now that the previous library building on-site is unoccupied, Westfield Washington Schools is requesting an opportunity to utilize the development for their needs. The Westfield Washington Event Center PUD proposal is a change of zoning request to permit associated site and building improvements to be able to develop additional educational programming opportunities. The item obtained a public hearing at the May's, May 8th meeting, where the item also received an eight-to-zero favorable recommendation from the APC. Matt Skelton of Church Churchill and Antrim is here tonight to provide any other additional details of the project. He's available to answer any questions, as am I, if you guys have any for staff. Thank you.
Any questions from council? Mr. Skelton?
There's been no changes, really, since coming before you, and if there are any questions, we're happy to respond, but I don't have anything to add.
Any questions from the council? Counselor McCarty?
No question, just comment. Just, I mentioned this APC, how wonderful an opportunity that this is for just a plethora of shamrocks, whether it be our foodies, being able to get real-world experience, having a home for our Shamrock Connections program, and just so on and so forth. The future opportunity here is just wonderful.
Thank you.
I would also be remiss, just because particularly with my day job, Westfield, most people don't realize how great we have educators. I think many of us are well aware we, our kids have great teachers. But Nikki Heflin has been recognized nationally by the American, excuse me, I cannot speak tonight, American Association Family and Consumer Sciences, as the number-one culinary educator in the country. Not talking county, I'm not talking state, I'm talking country. And she has an unbelievably robust program where they're not just learning culinary schools, but also business, financial skills, and so forth. This allows that program to grow even more, and those kids having tremendous business experience in addition to culinary experience. And I think we all celebrate and are thankful of our great teachers, but I'd be remiss if I didn't thank Nikki, too.
It'll make for a really nice-looking building, too. They're reskinning the north side and the west sides, which are the most prominent sides.
Thank you. Any further questions? We need a motion and a second?
Motion to approve ordinance 2424?
Second.
A motion made by Counselor McCarty, second by Counselor Heron. Any further discussion? Seeing none, may we call the roll?
John Dart.
Yes.
Joe Deppner.
Yes.
Noah Heron.
Yes.
Chad Huff.
Yes.
Victor McCarty.
Yes.
Patrick Tam.
Yes.
Kurt Waninger.
Yes.
Motion carries seven zero.
Thank you. Ordnance 24-29, which is reestablishing Fund 205. Director McConnell, I believe, is here or not?
I'm online.
He's online. Voice from the heavens. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Go ahead.
Thank you, counselor. Counselors, for the record, Chris McConnell, Director of Parks and Recreation, as stated, the ordinance before you is to reestablish the 205 Fund, which is a green space beautification fund. The ordinance properly establishes revenue that can be put into the fund, as well as expenditures that the fund can be used for, and it's basically just a housekeeping of getting this fund established properly.
Thank you. Any questions, comments? We need a motion and a second for this ordinance this evening.
I'll make a motion to approve ordinance 2429, the reestablishment of Fund 205.
Second.
We have a motion made by Counselor Waniger, second by Counselor McCarty. Any further discussion? Seeing none, may we call the roll?
Joe Deppner.
Yes.
Noah Heron.
Yes.
Chad Huff.
Yes.
Victor McCarty.
Yes.
Patrick Tam.
Yes.
Kurt Waninger.
Yes.
John Dart.
Yes.
Motion carries seven zero.
Thank you. This evening, we'll move to new business, which is Resolution 24-118, the common counsel of the city of Westfield, Indiana, authorizing and approving transfers of unexpected appropriated bond proceeds and earnings thereon. Our clerk treasurer, Ms. Ailer, may make a brief presentation. Thank you.
Sure. So basically, when we had the bands on Grand Junction, there was just some money left over in those accounts. When we converted them to bonds, and what we'd like to do is get those off to those books, transfer that money to the bonds, and then we will apply those, that money left over, towards the payment that's due on the bond, I believe, in July.
Any conversation? Counselor Dart?
And what was, what was the amount?
I actually forgot to look it up. I apologize if you
I apologize. If you give me a minute, I can do that to tell you.
Approximately.
I have a front report in my bag. One is rather minor, and under $1,500. The other's more in the vein of $100,000.
Okay.
But that's all it is.
Okay, thank you.
May we, any further conversation? This is a resolution this evening, so we need, we have the ability to make a motion and a second, and also to vote on this resolution this evening. Any, may I have a motion?
Motion to approve Resolution 24-118.
Second. We have a motion made by Councilor Dart, seconded by Councilor Huff. Any further discussion? Councilor Heron? Or you just, okay, misread. Seeing none, may we call the roll? Thank you.
Noah Heron?
Yes.
Chad Huff?
Yes.
Victor McCarty?
Yes.
Patrick Tam?
Yes.
Kurt Waninger?
Yes.
John Dart?
Yes.
Joe Deppner?
Yes.
Motion carries with my thanks, seven zero.
Thank you. Resolution 24-121, which is the common counsel of the City of Westfield, Indiana, establishing an audit committee and approving a request for the State Board of Accounts to authorize the city to opt-out of the State Board of Accounts examinations and engage a certified public accountant to conduct examinations. This evening, the presentation is by both Caitlin, as well as Oscar Gutierrez. Oscar?
Do you want me to go first, real quick?
Go ahead.
I'll just give a quick legal overview. I'll let Oscar go into it a little more in depth. Basically, state law provides that the city can opt-out of being audited by the State Board of Accounts and select its own CPA to conduct audits. To do that, you guys have to pass a resolution. That's what's here in front of you. Along with that, an audit committee has to be created consisting of three people. It's very specific who can be on that. I think one is a mayor appointee, two are council, and those are all already included in the document as well. Then the audit committee meets and takes various steps, establishing factors to evaluate services, publishing an RFP, looking at and evaluating proposals, and then recommending three CPAs. Then it comes back to the council to select a CPA based on those recommendations from the audit committee, and it would be up to you all to negotiate a contract. So this resolution, as it's written, would be one, approval of the city's request to the SBOA to opt-out, and to the creation of an audit committee, which is a necessary step to start that process. And I'll let Oscar go into some of the reasoning a little more.
Okay, not a whole lot left to say on that process. No, I mean on the creation. I will say that one of those three members has to be a CPA, which will be one of your council appointments, which is also already on that resolution. Another piece of information is that this will be for next year's audit of 2024 financials, and this has to be in place prior to the end of the month in order to be approved. The reason we are recommending this is because the stable accounts hasn't been generally consistent with audits for the city. The clerk's, clerk treasurer's office is currently undergoing three years backlog of audits for 2021, 2022, and 2023. As early as last year, they had just completed 2020? Yeah, 2021, yeah. Matt, sorry. So, as you can see, the consistency hasn't always been there, and it took a lot of political will from the mayor to contact several legislators, as well as department heads at the governor's office, to ensure that the stable accounts was here. The reason this is important is because the city enters into obligations via bonds, leases, et cetera, and the one thing that every lender looks at is your financial history, and the only way to verify that is via audits. Otherwise, it's just to trust those, these are, these numbers are correct. Furthermore, the city is undergoing switching from a cash basis, which I call it your checkbook accounting, to actual accrual accounting, which is more in line to a business of the size of Westfield. You're dealing with almost $100 million a year, and it should operate as an enterprise that does so. This year will be the first year in 2024 that the city undergoes a GAAP audit. That will be done sometime, hopefully, early fall. Madam Clerk Treasurer might have a little more detail on that, but that will be the first year that the stable accounts conducts this. Typically, the stable accounts outsources that service to an accounting firm. So the likelihood that if you did not take these steps, that a professional accounting firm would conduct the audit next year would be pretty good. However, there is a state contract where accounting firms are only allowed to charge a minimal amount of dollars. And as private businesses, you can understand that the quality of the auditors that they send is not necessarily a partner level or a management level, it's going to be more of an entry-level auditor. One of the reasons why we want to control our destiny is because we can determine the quality of those auditors, and while it may be potentially more expensive than having to go through the stable of accounts and pay the QPA fees, we hold them accountable to, A, be responsive, timely, respectful to the clerk treasurer's office, et cetera. So, all of those metrics will be included in the RFP, and those are more of the backstory of why we're doing this. The city is currently undergoing some credit issues with standard and poor that will be resolved as soon as these audits are completed, and we're hoping that those issues won't be an issue moving forward, as we'll be able to invite an auditor to come in when we're ready in the future. Any questions?
What's the projected cost?
We won't know until we send out the RFP and we get the responses. I will say that they know how much the state QAP is, so I don't expect them to deviate crazy far from that, but we won't know until they respond. So the expected fees, we'll get when we get the response, and we'll come before this body. The city has not undergone a GAAP audit yet, so, for example, right now, the three cash audits are being done by government staffers. Most of them are likely not CPAs, and they're not conducting, you know, general accounting principles-type audits. So, the first time that the city will have a GAAP audit will be this fall, and we'll get an invoice for that, and we'll probably be able to compare how much we paid for that GAAP audit versus the responses of the, of those that we sent it to. And we're going to send it to almost anybody that is willing to respond, with the exception of Blue and Company, who's, who is one of the members, will be exempt from that. Any accounting firm that has done business with the city, such as Crone, KSM, myself, anybody that has CPAs on staff, will also be excluded because of the conflict of having done work. You can't audit your own work. So, our goal, Counselor, is that if we cast a wide net, we'll get a quality, affordable option.
Counselor?
Once the council makes a selection of a certified public accounting firm, and we enter into a contract, is that a one-year contract, three-year contract? Is it up to the discretion of the council, or is it based on performance?
It's supposed to be an annual contract, and we're supposed to undergo the requests annually to the State Board of Accounts, and even after we make this request, they could still deny our request. So, we're just taking the steps to request to be exempt from it. Now, we followed everything. We're planning to follow everything according to the rules, and don't necessarily expect them to say no, but they do hold the subjective option of saying no. And we will have to do again the following year. After you do it a couple of years, they allow you to, you know, for example, the City of Fishers just asks a letter from the stable accounts that says, "Go through the process every year, and just let us know who you pick." So, we don't have that luxury yet. We are just asking to be exempt, and then next year, we will have to undergo this process again. You won't have to recreate the audit committee. The audit committee will already exist. They'll have to RFP it and bring it back to the council in 2026 for audit 2025.
You mentioned an issue that has been caused and that go through this audit currently over the last three years, revenues with the standard and poor. What kind of effect has that been? And what kind of effect does, you know, past, I guess, poor audits impact the city?
I wouldn't say poor audits, just timely audits. Again, the only way for rating agencies or any creditor to verify that your financials are accurate is through audits. Otherwise, it is just us saying, "Look at our numbers, they look pretty," and, you know, they just have to take our word. So, the risk is that if you don't have timely audits, you, they can pull your credit altogether. So if you equate it to a human credit, you just can't borrow money if you don't, one doesn't exist. It could also lead to a downgrade, so if you are borrowing at a 720, and all of a sudden you're at a 620, it affects your interest rates, and where you're borrowing millions of dollars. Any movement in those basis points is a negative effect on taxpayers, much greater than whatever this audit's going to cost.
Thank you.
And then, Oscar, you talked about Fishers. How many adjacent communities are using this similar process?
I can't speak to opting out, but Westfield's currently the only city not on GAAP. So, from the, from the city, so Fishers, Carmont, Noblesville, all have GAAP audits, is my understanding.
I know Fishers. I've worked with some of the attorneys. I think Noblesville, I can't say for sure, but I know, I've talked with the Fishers attorney about it.
Noblesville has a GAAP audit. I don't know who does the, if they go through the State Board, if they opt-out.
They've opted out.
Okay.
Yep.
So I, it is not uncommon, and again, it, most executives like to have the power to hold those that are coming in to be accountable for the services they're providing. We're going to receive a bill in September if they, if the stable accounts outsourced it to whatever accounting firm, you know, we have no account, they have no accountability to us, they have the accountability to the stable accounts, and it's just nicer to demand that they show up on time, that they have qualified individuals, and that they are being.
Rather than client, if you will, versus.
Correct.
Any further questions, comments?
Can I add that there is a question about if we have to do this every year? I checked into whether this means we have to continue to do this, and it does say that we can terminate using a CPA, an independent CPA, if you guys pass another resolution, and there's timeframes and everything. So I just wanted to double-check that this wasn't a forever opt-out for, in perpetuity.
Thank you.
We would have to let the stable accounts know that they need to show up, probably out of courtesy, or we'll be back in the same situation.
Sure. On the, I would just bring everyone's attention to Section 3. Our appointee is our Chairman of the Finance Committee, Councilor Waniger. Mr. Baer is also the Managing Director for Blue and Company here in Indianapolis, and they're in multiple states. And Item C, I believe Tanya Hyatt's name is misspelled, T-O-N-Y-A, who's the mayor's appointee.
You're correct.
Those would be the, yeah, those would be the three individuals. So I'm just making a note that we have a simple misspelling. If there's any further conversations, it is a resolution this evening, so we do need a motion and a second. Any further discussion and a vote as well, if so, so be. Is there a motion?
A motion to approve Resolution 24-121.
Second.
A motion made by Councilor Dart, seconded by Councilor Heron. Any further conversation? Seeing none, may we call the roll? Oh, Victor, I'm sorry. I was quick on that. So the motion was made by Councilor Dart, I just heard in my right ear, and then seconded by Councilor McCarty, my apologies. Seeing no further conversation, may we call the roll?
Chad Huff?
Yes.
Victor McCarty?
Yes.
Patrick Tam?
Yes.
Kurt Waninger?
Yes.
John Dart?
Yes.
Joe Deppner?
Yes.
Noah Heron?
Yes.
Motion carries seven zero.
Thank you. The next two ordinances are simply first readings, no votes for consideration this evening, but our first ordinance is 24-32, which is the common counsel of the City of Westfield, Indiana, authorizing transfers of operating balances from the Infrastructure Improvement Fund, General Fund, and Parks Programming Events Fund, and approving additional appropriations of funds from the operating balances of the Grand Junction Tiff Fund, General Fund, Fire Fund, Sports Complex Fund, and Westfield Welcome Fund. We have two individuals presenting this, but Ms. Tolan, would you like to make a brief presentation?
Actually, Caitlin's going to take it first than me.
Great.
So I just wanted to remind you, President, there is a public hearing with this one today, even though it's just a first reading. Also, anyone here from the public, this, a notice was published, but there's additional transfers and appropriations that are actually not presented in this ordinance. Everything that's in here was noticed, but some things have been removed, so just for anyone's here for a public hearing. So nothing was added or changed, but things were removed. This is actually less than was noticed in the paper.
Thank you.
Good evening, council members. For the record, Danielle Carey Tolan, Deputy Mayor of the City of Westfield. So I'm going to hopefully get everything going. Oh, great. No, this is bad. As many of, I'm just going to advance through these real quick, so then I can, oops, see this is why. Kayla, how do I go back? Can you go back on the, there? I know. Everybody's going to laugh at me. Okay. So we're still dealing with previous administration budget constraints. I have been, I've met with each one of you individually, so just to let you guys know, this, this request really aligns with the advancing Westfield vision for the new administration here. Just a reminder that we did have $14 million in the general fund dollars for the 2024 budget that was not allocated to this budget. The revenues continue to outpace the expenditures continuously. We are currently, have about 110% of the budget in revenues. So for instance, at the end of 2023, we had $52 million in reserves. Maybe it would be faster if I did that. So just to give you guys a quick, oh, no. We're both doing this at the same time. This isn't working. Go back. There you go. Priorities, pillars for advancing Westfield, that the transition team and the administration put out was obviously public safety excellence, also transparency and accountability, quality growth and livability, empowerment, and continuous improvement. So everything that you see upon these requests all align with all of this. I want to go. There's two, there's, one more. So the first is administration, so the total request there, keep on going, keep on going. I know. One more. There we go. It's about $499,543. The salary of, for financial strategists, we originally had this years ago, and we're just re-implementing that into the budget. And then dues of $35,000, this is for Develop Indy and Indy Chamber. Originally, these dues are $50,000, but with negotiation this year, we got it down to $35,000, since this is our first year, and just making sure that this is a value add for economic development. And then professional services of $285,000. So advisor has been with us, and you guys appropriated that previously, and this is continuing consulting fees to our core values, and then implementing an internal leadership academy. Also with bridge builders to develop and improve our SOPs and job descriptions, so we're just going to take chunks of the administration at a time, and we're doing HR, IT, and administration for the first round. Look at that, one more. Oh, back. There, I know. They are set. I hope they are. So for community development, travel and training of $15,000. This is an increase of development, training for community development staff. Mayor has requested them to go to additional conferences and trainings, so we're estimating that cost of $15,000. Facilities and events, this is $1.2 million. This is for the construction of city services facilities, to update that for the ever-growing needs of our staff. As you guys know, we're doubling and tripling people up in offices, and currently, my office is in a conference room. This is also to make sure that in five to eight years, we have the ability to grow until we build a new city hall. we have the ability to grow until we build a new city hall. Parks and Recreation, this is $1.6, or $1.2, $1.260,000. This is a redesign value, reengineer for the Grand Park Plaza Amphitheater. And then, also, potentially three roundabout landscapes, marquees. And I have described those to you guys previously in an email, which roundabouts that McConnell is looking at. Economic Development, this is $50,000 for professional development of planned development services. And then, also, a salary for a redevelopment manager for Janelle's Department. Informatics, professional services of $25,000. This is, we're looking at technology analysis for informatics. And then, also, a GIS tech. I don't know why that is off, but it is. That's okay. That's why it got off. So, salary for a GIS tech. Our GIS tech, I don't know what her title is, manager, is highly overwhelmed. Today, found out that we had hit 900 permits for the city of Westfield, which we're probably going on a record-breaking pace again, just for her needs to keep up with the request of new maps and everything throughout the city. Also, $82,000. This is new software for this new city website, a parks software. And then, we just have increasing needs for new staff of hardware and licenses. Mayor Promotions of $280,000. This is for staff recognition and then also expenses for the mayor's gala. So, we have brought in the mayor's, the Yellow Tie Gala into the city. So, it will be a mayor's gala instead of a standalone youth assistance event. And we just need expenses to get that up and going. City Council Request of $25,000. This is for your first tranche of legal services for the GPSC contract as you guys have the needs for your own attorney to review the PPA. Communications, this is actually a transfer of the $18,000 from Westfield Welcome to Comms for tuition-based. And then, promotions of $120,000 of centralized promotions for staff and council, and then increased marketing and advertising. Fire and Equipment, $329,000. So, this is for equipment and air packs, both for ladder 84 and engine 84. And then, services of approximately $1.3 million. This is for the design of station 84 and 85. The owner's rep for 85. And then, contract for heart monitors as well. And some of these things are needed now because of the long wait of getting the items to build them out. And we will need it for when we open 84. Grand Park, as you guys know, this is, I'm not going to go through each one of these, but it's about a $3.8 million request. So, we only budgeted through June. And obviously, we're still in negotiations for GPSC. So, this will go through October. For our needs, some have asked, why do we went to October? We're hoping, again, to be done in October. If we're not, we'll be before you again. So, the total requests for all the appropriations is $9.4 million. I do have more information if you guys have any additional questions, but I have met with each one of you individually. And I think I've answered most of your questions.
Any questions this evening? Counselor Dart?
Yeah, these aren't questions specifically for anyone here, but more my comments that I'd like the administration and the department heads to consider as, as we're continuing to work through these appropriations requests. So, right, we're, right now, we're through five months of expenses, right? So, we, that's on a straight-line expense basis, that's 41% of expenses. We've got 60% left in seven months. So, you know, I guess I ask the question, do the department heads have that seven months of expenses that are available to them, in average, totally allocated for the balance of the year? And I say that because I've been in business a long time, and not too many department heads and/or individuals can truly foresee all those expenses that go on for the balance of the year. So, with that said, I'm wondering if there's an opportunity to reallocate some of the dollars. There's at least 10 line items in the appropriation request that are under $100,000. Actually, there's one that's $100,000, the rest are all under $50,000. That totals about $412,000 in requests that, there's $25,000 here. There's $15,000 there. There's $30,000 there. Is there an opportunity to reallocate? In other words, if these requests are truly important, is there an opportunity to reallocate the dollars to these expenses and maybe not do something else? Okay? I know this team, this administration, has been working really hard, putting in a lot of hours, and they've been working really fast. And that's true with the majority of organizations in, in America, and not just private organizations, private businesses, but governments as well. And my, one of my concerns is that if these dollars are appropriated, does the team really have the time to accomplish these things before the end of the year? I think that's a major concern. I've heard that people are working all hours of the day. And if these dollars are needed to do things, can they actually get it done by the end of the year? And then, there's a few line items. The city services redesign, the roundabouts, and the design of stations 84 and 85. You know, of the $9.4 million, these are $3.4 million, so a third of the appropriations request. And I'm not questioning the value, but I think these three opportunities, or three requests, probably require more analysis with multiple RFPs, with additional approval from a lot more people, and maybe alternative solutions. Okay? So, I don't want to pick on the roundabouts, but if we're looking at three or four roundabouts for $1.2 million, that's more than just stone and trees. Use the word marquees. Who's in charge of approving marquees and the expenses associated with building some roundabouts? And I'm saying, are there alternative solutions? Who's going to be looking at that? And I just find it difficult to approve $1.2 million without looking at plans further. So, if, if Deputy Mayor Tolan, if you and the administration would consider these concerns and/or questions, it'd be greatly appreciated.
Any other questions or comments this evening? Hearing none, this will be, we do need to conduct a public hearing.
Sorry.
As soon as I made eye contact, just want the record to show. We do need to open up for a public hearing this evening at 7:58. We'll open up the public hearing if there's anyone that would like to address the council this evening. Do we have anyone happen to be online that would like to address the council? Seeing none, we'll close the public hearing this evening at, still 7:58, according to my watch. Move along to the next item on the agenda, which is Ordinance 24-33, which is the common counsel of the city of Westfield, Indiana, creating a new fund for general redevelopment purposes. This evening will be presented by our city attorney, Ms. Glaser.
Sure. So, I think we've done this a few times over the past months, creating funds. The State Board of Accounts has provided guidance on how to create funds. That's within the council's purview. You have to pass an ordinance with certain information in there. This is just, to my knowledge, a request for a first reading of a fund for redevelopment purposes, just a general fund. And the purpose would be to stay away from commingling Tiff funds with any general funds or non-Tiff funds. We're working through some questions with the Clerk Treasurer's Office on fund numbers and things like that. So, that shall be ironed out before this comes before you guys again. And Janelle's here as well, if you guys have any questions for her or me or anyone.
Thank you. Any council comments, questions this evening? Seeing none, this would be considered for potential adoption consideration on our June 10 meeting. We'll move to city council comments this evening. Victor, Counselor McCarty, would you like to give a redevelopment commission, excuse me, area plan commission update? Thank you.
Yes, sir. Last week, we had our monthly workshop meeting. On the consent agenda was Indy Auto Man, which would be a new dealership here in town. And then, also, Arby's, that will be over on 191st, opposite of the Family Express. And then, our one workshop item was the Osborne Trails Pewty Amendment, which is for the West Fork Whiskey Development with apartments and such. So, that was it.
Thank you. This evening, we also have a council update from the Finance Committee chaired by Counselor Wanniger.
The Finance Committee meets monthly. Today, we met and went over various items. First thing was the presentation on the mayor's budget proposal for next year in regards to zero-based budgeting. And we went through a presentation associated with that. I will provide that to the council members after this meeting. Also, we talked about the 2025 budget timeline associated with it and the steps that it's going to take to get to the final budget and approval by October 16 of 2024. We discussed the Finance Oversight Committee's roles and responsibilities, which we're still working through. And we'll have a formal presentation at our next Finance Committee meeting. And then, we do, as we do every month, we review the 2024 revenue summary, fund report, and appropriation summary.
And thank you. Hearing no other comments, I do apologize for my voice quality and being a little bit out of it. If, in case you didn't notice, our rugby team won a state championship. But in the Tam household, I mean, a baseball sectional is a big frickin' deal. So, so I may have completely lost my voice along with several other dads this past week. So, apologize for that. Any messages from the mayor this evening?
Nope.
I will entertain a motion to adjourn.
Still moved?
Second. Motion made by Counselor McCarty, seconded by Counselor Huff. All in favor, signal by saying aye.
Aye.
We are adjourned. Thank you.